Good evening. I'd like to call the July 26, 2022 School Board of Directors Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag, not a state, so I'm gonna, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. In terms of attendance, Ms. Perdue will be coming late, and Ms. Cancro is absent. All other board members are in attendance. Mr. Rookstool will be participating virtually, and therefore, all votes will be roll-call votes because of the virtual participation. Then we have guests-
Madam President, Mr. Young is also absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Mr. Young is also absent. So Ms. Cancro and Mr. Young are absent. Samira, Ms. Perdue will be here late, and Mr. Rookstool is here virtually. Thank you. Now, we have guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have one speaker, Jack from Fidavia, our owner's rep, on the Arrowhead and Eagleville construction updates. Members of the board, you should have a paper copy at your table, and we'll be posting the presentation to the screen. Jack?
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Jack Ayers. I represent Fidavia Construction Management and the Methakton School District. The following is a brief update on the Arrowhead Project. Site and building exterior, the asbestos abatement is an existing building to be completed. Actually, that's done already. We're gonna begin pouring concrete stoops and sidewalks. We've already started that, and we're continuing that. Bulk earth moving, rough and finish grading is continuing. Topsoil seeding sod at select locations on-site is continuing. The interior terrazzo flooring installation is complete, that should be, is complete. The wood gym floor installation is about 80% complete. It's ongoing. Kitchen health inspection to incur on August 16th. That'll be the final inspection. Elevator installation is ongoing and should be done by the end of next week. Deliver and begin installation of owner furniture that already started and are moving right along with that. Mechanical electrical plumbing work, startup and commissioning of the building sprinkler system, that's ongoing. Balancing of building HVAC system, that's ongoing as well. Fire alarm system installation, that continues. We'll be on that soon for the final fire alarm test, soon as the elevator's done. And the audio/video systems installation continue throughout the building. Upcoming work, again, complete the elevator with L and I inspection, complete building life safety systems, complete building finishes, and procure the occupancy from Lower Providence Township. And again, we have all the numbers up there shown accordingly. Anyone have any questions on Arrowhead?
Questions to my right for Jack on the Arrowhead Project. Samira Guinness?
Ballpark, do you have a date circled for the getting the CO?
It should be the 17th.
Great.
Teachers are due to come in the 18th.
Mr. Rookstool, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Anyone to my, Ms. Reese?
Not really a question, but I did notice from Dr. Roberts' video today that demolition began.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the-
Existing building?
Existing, the, I hate to call it the old building, but if, so, we're right on schedule with that. I just, that's a big piece, that if nobody noticed or nobody follows Dr. Roberts on Twitter, he had a nice video of the demolition. So if anybody has any children at home that like big machinery, he had it there. It was great.
There have been plenty of parents coming by and taking photos and pictures, and everybody's excited. All the, all the demolition of the building should be done by the end of next week, and then they'll separate everything, steels, metals, concrete, for recycling purposes.
Oh, that, thank you. That was my last, I noticed a big pile of steel. So, wonderful. Thank you for all your assistance in getting this completed on time.
You're quite welcome.
Any additional questions? And Jack, is there any update on any of the outstanding punch list items from Eagleville?
Yes, the tile should be done by Thursday, Friday at later, latest this week. The architect was there. We met with him today. He's gonna bring the manufacturer's rep out to look at it first, and then we'll bring the district in for final approval and review and approval.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on Eagleville?
I should. Just back to Arrowhead with the building being demolished, and I haven't been on the site real recently, but the buses and the ways in and everything, like that'll be, that's on schedule or that's finished?
That's on, that's on schedule.
Okay.
The bus loop is due to be paved on the 4th and the 5th of August, and then the striping will happen on the 8th, and signage, striping and signage. And then there'll be parking back beyond the old school, where the teachers are gonna park, and parents and buses will drop off on the loop.
And then there's just sort of a longer term to, to make that into fields and to landscape than in front? Is that correct?
A little bit, but we're geared up to get the parking lot done first.
Right, the parking lot, but that, but just so people see it, it looks a little unfinished. That'll still be ongoing after the start of school.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The, the completion date is the 2023, April of 2023.
Okay.
Final completion.
Thank you.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be additional communication going out on Tuesday to the Arrowhead parents specifically about the, the car drop-off and the recommendation from the administration for them to utilize bus transportation to the most, the greatest extent possible. That'll, and we'll share that communication with the board, but just want you to know that, you know, Jack did mention that the cars and the buses will be in the loop, and that's not accurate. There's two separate loops, and one loop will require a temporary, I'll call it a temporary walkway to get from the existing parking, teacher parking lot where the car loop will be in order to get students to the one-side entrance. So we'll have staff there to assist as, as we normally do for arrival and dismissal, but it will be a little bit more cumbersome, and we're recommending that for the next several months that our, our parents cooperate with us by utilizing the bus transportation and make life a lot easier for them as, as parents, as well as students and the staff. Any, any final comments, Jack?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. That ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening, and we just want to make an announcement that Ms. Perdue has now arrived. And with that, that ends my, ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. And now we have reports of which I don't believe there are any, because North Monco didn't-
Yeah, well, we should have the, we should have the proper, I'm sorry. We should have the property report listed, and-
Okay.
And please note that the DEI report, Ms. Washington will be joining us in September, and she'll be giving that report.
Okay. Great. And then normally, we would present North Monco Tech, but they did not meet, we did not meet in July. Anything, DIU, nothing. No board reps here, foundation-
And notice that the foundation reports will, will be with the new executive director and the new board president for the foundation.
Okay, and we don't have anyone-
They're not here this evening.
Okay. So superintendent's report, looks like that was next.
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. I, I, along with some of the other notifications, I have two matters that I want to bring to the board's attention. The first one is the Health and Safety Plan. So you'll see attached to the agenda under my advisements, the Health and Safety Plan for the 22-23 school year. The plan follows a CDC template and is required as part of our continual acceptance and use of the ESRS funding. The plan was updated and re, and received review from the pandemic team. Please note that we have new members to the pandemic team, and they're all listed in the, in, in the last, second to last page of the plan. That includes Ms. Perdue, Ms. Cancro, Nurse Thompson, and Nurse Ben Eric. Please note that the majority of the changes were format and clarity related, as well as the move back to our traditional lunch locations. The district will continue to utilize the county's protocol on isolation contact tracing and will, and coordinate vaccination clinics with our local skipback pharmacy when appropriate. While this update is not on the agenda for your approval, please note that, you know, we'll continue to make revisions as we get advisements, and we will post them here to the agenda, but in the meantime, if there are any questions, I can take them now, or you can certainly send me questions in, in email for, for a response. My second item is the 22-23 budget. As an update, the Board of School Directors approved the 22-23 budget inclusive of a flat state and special education subsidy allocation. And we had that approval on June 21st of 2022. Following that approval, the state government passed a landmark, a public education funding budget, on July 8th of 2022 that provided basic education subsidy increase of $649,302.73, and a special education increase of $106,078.19 to Methakton School District. In all, we will have an additional $755,380.92 of revenue in these areas. A plan for the appropriate use of these funds will be provided for discussion with the Finance Committee in the October meeting. And that ends my updates here for this evening.
All right. Thank you. The board will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Jim Malick, Warsester. I'd like to comment on item 9H, the settlement agreement, but I can't. I asked Dr. Zerbi to provide us with a copy of that agreement at this meeting so we could review it and then give proper comment. He refused. That's not transparency in my book. That and the fact I've already done two right-to-no requests, because Dr. Zerbi refused to answer the question as to how Mailey contacted the district or Dr. Zerbi and gave notification of them not coming back here. Telephone, email, letter, refused. Forced to file right-to-no requests. I was told in an email today that I gotta get this agreement via right-to-no request. This is your problem. You, you took care of your solicitor problem. They're, they're good, but what you're doing now is bad, okay? Both of my right-to-no requests yielded one document, not from Mailey, but from Tim Bricker, telling Mailey they were in breach of their agreement. Well, how does he know to tell them that? That's my question. And nobody will answer it. Can you answer that for me? How does Tim know to tell them they're in breach of their agreement? Somebody make a phone call? I guess here's my other question. Do you keep phone logs of your conversations with people? If you don't, you need to start. Do you keep meeting logs of the people you meet with privately in your office or elsewhere, like Ms. Drummond and Ms. Larsonese? If you don't, you should start. I don't know whether you're familiar with Section 506(c)(3) of the right-to-no law, but here's what it is. "An agency may exercise its discretion to make any otherwise exempt record accessible for inspection and copying under this chapter." Part 3, "The agency head determines that the public interest favoring access outweighs any individual agency or public interest that may favor restriction of access." Now, why wouldn't you want to show us the agreement? You've effectively taken away my ability to comment during public comment. Oh, you're giving me an opportunity to comment, but I can't say anything about an agreement, because I don't have it. I would think very hard about what you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Brooke Hebner, Eagleville Elementary School. And I just wanted to comment on 10A and just do a very special thank you to Deb Cherry, who will be resigning from Warsester Elementary Library, and I just wanted to publicly thank her for all of her time and energy that she spent making it a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none. Next is Board Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the June 21st special and work session and June 28th regular meeting minutes as attached? Ms. Rocco, a second. Mr. McGinnis, any comments? Oh, sorry, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, there's a few typos on there. I know Dr. Malick's name is misspelled, for example, on some of those, so if those are clerical in nature, can we approve those as, as is with Beth going back and correcting some of those typos on the-
No concern with that.
We'll make certain that the, the corrections are made.
Okay. So can I vote? Can I get all in favor to approve this with the clerical corrections? Oh, sorry, we need a roll-call vote. Yep, all right.
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes, yes.
I heard a yes. I'm a yes, Ms. Rocco?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's, how many is that? Seven, zero. Thank you. All right. Next, we have fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you. This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers. Recommendation to increase the substitute teacher rate with regards to retired teachers from Methakton School District from $135 per day to $165 per day, an increase of $30 for an estimated cost of $15,480. We also have a recommendation, a rate increase for the substitute nurse and professional, power professionals. Registered, the registered nurses are going from $52 to $56, an increase of $4. LPNs from $42 to $46, also a $4 increase, and power professionals from $23 to $26, an increase of $3. There is the 2021 Master Plan. There is a change order for the Eagleville Project with the plumber contractor, which is a credit of $10,925 for unused allowances. There is also the, approved the allowance for the high school of the general contractor for $54,681.35. This will result in no change in the contract price. There's also change orders, six change orders and an allowance for the Arrowhead Project, the first one being for $5,483.76 for additional supports in the gymnastics and providing emergency power to the ATC Room J2. The next one is for $6,151.71 associated with the base course of the bus loop, and next one for $769.68 for a broken casework, which will be reimbursed by the movers who broke the casework, followed by $3,648.81 for a cover to cover the exposed sprinkler in the lobby. The next change order is for $6,151.98 for additional lines to be included in the gym flooring, and then the last change order for $2,258.38 for additional concrete work. And then we have a change order for $18,080 for the removal and disposal of additional asbestos in the flooring of the old Arrowhead Building. And lastly, we'll have the settlement agreement between Mailey and the school district with regards to the termination of their agreement.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to take anything separately under fiscal items? No, okay. Can I have a motion to approve all items under fiscal as presented? Mr. McGinnis, a second. Ms. Perdue? Any comments? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I just have two questions. One was related to the substitute nurse rates, because we are hiring some nurses, and I'm just making sure that the substitute rate is not more than the hiring rate, because it seemed, seemed based on hours, not to equate too much. I realize that might be contractual, but it's sort of an interesting dynamic if that's the case.
Mr. Bricker, do you know that answer? If not, I can get the answer for you.
Yeah. But the reason that we're bringing this forward is this is, you know, we're advised from the provider that this is a competitive rate in order to get the substitute nurses in, because there is a high demand for them, as you might imagine.
Okay, my second question or comment, Dr. Zerby, I believe at the last school board meeting, we talked about 9H, the settlement agreement, and you explained what had happened, where we received a phone call from the auditors and explained what had gone through. So I believe the explanation of what happened and why it happened, why Mailey decided to drop us suddenly out of nowhere, we don't know specifically that reason. I don't think we know. I don't think that was stated.
We know what they told us, and, you know, it's a matter of staffing. So if they're not able to complete the audit in the time appropriate, it led to this particular outcome.
Yeah. So my understanding is that I was able to speak to the new auditor as representative from the finance to talk to a board member, which they reached out to. My understanding is that they, that new auditor was requested services from several other districts at the same time, and they only took us from Mathacton because of the timing of making the decision so quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we were actually at an administrative retreat when we became notified that we were getting dropped. And so Tim and I excused ourselves out of the retreat and, you know, frantically went on the hunt for, you know, the resolution, knowing how challenging it would be, because there were other districts that were doing the exact same thing around the exact same time and the limitations that most auditors have, where they have their staffing and their schedule already set months in advance of the notice we received.
Yeah. So it's primarily, we believe, primarily driven by a labor shortage at the auditors, and many audit firms are not taking on new clients. Do we know of any districts that have not found an auditor to replace?
I'm not aware at this time.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But I think the most important part of this conversation is with all settlement agreements, it's been our practice not to post the agreements on the agenda and to provide those agreements in advance to members of the board so they can review and ask questions as they see appropriate in advance of the matter becoming before them for a vote.
Yeah. So I just want to send appreciation to Dr. Zerby and Tim for resolving this issue and for the next two years not costing the district any more money related to the process and that we have auditors and we will meet the requirements of the third and fourth quarter this year.
Any other comments under fiscal?
The only thing I'll add real quick is just at our IU meeting, there was also discussion that Mailey had a labor shortage. And they, I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't know all the details, but they were aware of it. So just, that was at a public meeting at the IU as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rocco?
Yeah, I actually noticed what Paul had mentioned as well about, because there are some nurses to be hired that are on the agenda, and I did notice the salary, and then I noticed the substitute rates. But what I think I would like to know, Tim, is, and GHR may or may not tell you, because I know from working in the staffing industry, a contracted rate with an employer is not always given the pay rate. So this is clearly not the pay rate the nurse is making. This is our contracted rate. But I would like to know, and they should be able to tell us, what their pay rate then is to the RN and the LPN based on the 52 to 56, because they, they're obviously making money on the hourly rate. There's contract they're covering usually. I'm guessing they're covering the malpractice, the insurance too. So it might just be a question to find out from them what, what the nurse there is actually being paid per hour. But that makes up for some of that, because if you, if you do that over a yearly salary, it comes out to $116,000. Well, that's not what they're making.
Yeah, I'm sure they're covering the insurance. There's no benefits or anything. That's just a straight number that we pay them. I'll get that number.
Ms. Perdue?
I just had a question on, give me one second, 9G. I guess the items under 9GC. And I believe, Tim, you presented, you said the movers will be reimbursing us after. I'm just wondering why we are, I guess, approving the change order. If you can just explain why, approving the change order and how the process will work, and exactly when they'll reimburse.
So in order to reduce the time and make sure we get the correct equipment, it's easier to make a change order and being reimbursed from the movers for that expense. So that way, we're getting the exact same furniture and casework, and there's no time delays, because we'll be able to use that company supplier versus go a different direction. So they will be reimbursing us that amount of money for the damage they caused.
Do you have the timeline for that, when that will happen?
I do not right now, no.
But have we processed a refund request from them already?
A refund? No, it would, they'll have to cut us a check for that amount.
I know. I'm asking if we requested it or processed it already.
They've already been put on notice and agreed to pay it.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anything else under fiscal? Okay, no other comments. We'll do the roll call vote. Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay. And I'm also a yes, so seven zero. The motions pass. Next, we have personnel items.
Dr. Sugini is not with us this evening, but under personnel, we have resignations professional. We have four that are, or five that are listed on the agenda. On resignations classified, we have two for your consideration this evening. Under job descriptions, we have two. Under employment professional, we have 16. Under employment classified, we have five. And under change of status classified, we have five. Under supplemental contracts, we have 13. And that will do it for the items for, under personnel. Are there any questions?
Let me get a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. My fault.
That's okay. Can I get a motion to approve all items under personnel, please? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. McGinnis, any comments or questions? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, to follow up on our comment related to the budget that Dr. Zerby made related to the additional state money. I know that, Tim, you've been working on a supporting schedule related to professional staff and support staff. So we had some addition, some of them were budgeted that way, obviously through the cycle with the known, was already put in the budget. But I, I would like to see maybe on, maybe in the September meeting or even the October meeting, you know, when we started school, how those schedules, the budget to, did schedule work looks versus what our actual costs are with the fill rates that we ended up. Because we are hiring a fair amount of individuals at step two, step three, which is in line with what we scheduled, but then some of these are people that are exiting with years of service. So I would like to see that schedule be used in sort of maybe the October finance, if we could.
Any other comments? Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the fall coaches. I see some gaps in there, and my understanding is some of those gaps are currently being filled. What is the exact practice, process, Dr. Zerby? It's more of a process question. Can they coach as soon as they fulfill all of the requirements in terms of the forms, the fingerprints, or do they actually have to be approved by us? And there's no way to, at this meeting, approve those if they get all those doc, the documents in? Because you have...
Actually, there is something on the agenda this evening that would allow that to occur.
But I'm talking about the vacancies. There's like three fall sports vacations for the senior high. So the concern is, we don't meet till the end of August. These kids and coaching staffs are down, they have some gaps in their coaching staff for the entire camp. And that, that's, that's hard. And I just wonder, is there a way to, hey, we bless these as long as everybody else is good with all the documents in?
Yeah, so if you look at 13D, summer hiring, 13D says, "Approval for a period of time up to and including August 31st authorizes superintendent to hire personnel to fill open budgeted positions." That would include those positions. And if you approve that this evening, that'll allow me to do the coaches, allow me to do teachers, and then those will all come back to you as a retroactive approval.
I'm sorry. I completely missed that.
That's okay. That's...
So the answer to my question, just to make sure, football coach gets everything he needs to get in on August 6th, you can bless it, and that's what 13, whatever it is. Take care. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments under personnel? Ms. Reese?
I know when Dr. Sugini is not here, and I know he always does a great job acknowledging those that are retiring or resigning, so I did want to say thank you. And I don't, I personally do not know the staff that is resigning, but I wanted to echo Ms. Hebner's thanks to Ms. Cherry, because I know, although I don't know her personally, certainly as a board member, we've heard many great things of all of her accomplishments in the library and the, what do you call the maker? I should know what that space, I, but I know she was just crucial in that and everything that she does. So I did want to echo those. And Dr. Zerby, I know Dr. Sugini is on all of this, and I'm, and I, I know I could talk about this at H or whatever it is, the thing later on the agenda about summer hiring, but if you could just keep us posted in the, up to date in the memo. We don't usually do that as much, but because it's such a crucial time, like of, you know, letting us know what we have left vacancy-wise, where we are, what, any concerns we might have, because that's legitimate any summertime, but certainly this year, more than, more than others. It's certainly nice to see more people being hired on the agenda versus, you know, resigning, but if we could be apprised of that. And then my only question, and if, I don't need an answer now, is I thought we were fully staffed, and I could have just misunderstood. I thought we were fully staffed for full-day kindergarten, and I, and I see two additional hires. So are we now good for full-day kindergarten?
That's final, yes. So as part, as part of the process, there was a lot of moving, movement internally, and then as a result of that, we were watching the enrollments. And instead of putting all 16 kindergarten teachers on for approval, not knowing what the enrollment's going to be, we, we waited it out till this point in time.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to double check. And then for, we typically do look at K to 4 class size right around this time, so I'm assuming we're doing that at education or maybe through the, through the memo?
Yeah, we're going to be putting the, that document in a weekly memo for the board to see. And so if it, it needs to be on the agenda for education, we can certainly include that.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Yes.
I just wanted to touch on, I guess, the resignations. I do, I know I've worked with Ms. Cherry since I've been part of the district, so I do appreciate all of her support and everything that she was doing for War Sester, and the same goes for the two other resignations on here, so I just want to say thank you. I, in looking through, I think we have five resignations, and it looked like most of those are filled with the exception of speech language for War Sester and then Spanish instructor at the high school. Is that correct?
I can't confirm that here this evening, but I certainly can give you an update on Friday as part of the memo.
And I, I only ask just because, I mean, I feel like both of those are maybe harder to fill when I think about speech language pathologists, and also I know we ran into issues with language teachers. So if you can confirm that, where we are with those two positions, and it seemed like Dr. Sugini is already on it, just because some of those positions are filled, but just an update on where we are with those. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Brooks, still, we're good. All right. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Um, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rocco?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brooks? Thank you. All right. That's seven zero. Thank you. All right. Next is curriculum and programs.
Thank you. Tonight for your approval is the 2021 through the 2024 Mathacton Special Education Plan that was previously provided. As required, the plan was on public review for the 28-day period from June 22 through July 21. During this time, we did not receive any additional feedback on the plan. Also, as a reminder, we will be required to develop and submit another plan next year around the same time. Because we were off schedule, the special ed plans were given a one-year extension due to the pandemic. So we will be redoing this again next year at the same time. And then lastly, I would just like to say thank you to the members of the Special Education Alliance, the community, and the board who participated on the Special Education Planning Committee.
Do you have any questions? Any questions? Okay. Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve the Special Education Plan 21, 2021 to 2024 under curriculum and programs as presented? Ms. Reese, can I get a second? Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or comments about this plan?
Just a quick thank you for, I know there's a lot that goes into it, so thank you, and I'm sorry you have to do it again next year.
It's okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is policy.
On the agenda for your approval this evening, as a second reading, are the following policies. Policy 141, school-related organizations. 142, migrant status. 150, Title I comparability of students. Policy 200, enrollment in district. 201, admission of students. And 202, eligibility of non-resident students.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve these items under policy for the second read? Mr. McGinnis, and a second. Mr. Winters? Any questions or comments about policy? All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have other. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. There, under 13c, as transportation, approve the list of third-party transportation vendors for the 2223 school year as attached, and approve the transportation employee roster for the 2223 school year as attached. Also, approve the bus stops for the 2223 school year as provided to the Board of School Directors. Again, that's provided to you in advance and not posted to the agenda for the, for the safety of our students. And the last one is approve the administration to enter into apparent transportation contract at the IRS rate for the 2223 school year where, where appropriate. Under summer hiring, as mentioned just briefly earlier this evening, is approve the period of time up to and including August 31 of '22 to authorize the superintendent to hire personnel to fill open budgeted positions when the failure to hire prior to August 31, '22 could, in the professional opinion of the superintendent, impair the ability of district to appropriately fill open positions for the 2223 school term. And the last item on the agenda under 13 is 13e, is a settlement agreement, approve the... Approve the separation agreement and release between the district and Ms. Stacy Kurtz.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the items under other? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. McGinnis? Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items? Mr. Winters?
I imagine that August 31st makes sense with the first day of school. But that does sort of handcuff you in the first couple of weeks of September. So if we had a resignation in third grade at Worcester and we didn't have a teacher that resigns and we don't have one as of the 31st of August, we're going to have a long-term sub up until through the month of September.
Sorry, yeah.
So I'm just throwing it out there is that, I mean, we're giving you that authority. Would it make sense to September 15th or some other date?
Yeah, there's no reason to go beyond the 15th because we would probably have a, you know, we would hit work session and.
I don't know what the difference. Personally, it seems like we should give you another two weeks, honestly, in my opinion. But.
I'm fine with that. That makes, doesn't make sense. Are you, are you amending the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the dates on item 13D, summer hiring from August 31st to September 15th.
Just to be clear, Ms. Reese or Mr. McGinnis, do you have any objection to the proposed amendment to the motion?
No.
No.
Correct. Okay, so with, with the acceptance of the individuals who made the original motion, the motion is, can be amended to read as, as proposed by Mr. McGinnis, which is, the motion currently is to approve all items under 13. It's 13C, 13D, and 13E. With item 13D reading, instead of the two places within that motion that state August 31st, the date would be changed to September 15th, 2022 in the two instances where that date is listed.
Okay, any other questions or comments about other? All right, I'll do a roll call vote. And just with the note of that date change under 13D.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right, thank you. Seven zero. Okay. And then next, we have dates for board members' calendars. There's a note that the August policy meeting and the August work session meetings have been canceled. And the October Education Committee meeting date has been changed to October 11th at 6:30 PM in the high school LGI. Anyone have any old or new business? No? Okay, now it's time for courtesy of the floor where the school directors provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You can also submit questions via email to information@mafton.org.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. I see a, a problem with the summer hiring motion that was just favorably voted upon. It seems to me that it permits the superintendent to, to hire people starting now to fill the needed positions. And it seems to me the, the timing specifics should permit for the board to vote as usual at the August meeting if that's, can be done. In other words, the way it reads, one could infer that positions would be filled by, solely by the superintendent when, when the board would have an opportunity to vote on those issues at the August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Maugh, Worcester. Thanks, Mr. Winters, for clarifying what you think happened so that Dr. Zerbi got a phone call from Malley. That's, that seems to be what happened. So an auditor who's been with us forever decides just to pick up the phone with two weeks left to go in the agreement and then terminate the agreement? Because Mr. Bricker said it was terminated as opposed to default, meaning they didn't do their job. So they pick up the phone on something like this, put themselves at risk, and they do it by phone? Did you make a phone lock? Did you take notes? Because then what had to happen was you had to call Mr. Bricker. Unless they called you and Mr. Bricker. Seems like they just called you because Mr. Bricker ended up sending them a letter or an email about how they, in breach of the agreement. So I ran this by a couple of people. Doesn't sound right for something of this magnitude where somebody's breaking their contract and their agreement and you're doing everything by phone? I mean, if that's what's happening and you're relying on memory for all the details, it's not a way to run a, a business or a school district unless you're trying to avoid right to know for the information. That's a possibility, too. You said we could submit questions to the district. What if they don't get answered? I sent Dr. Zerbi 15 questions. He refused to answer them. So what do I do then? What, right to know? I mean, I thought we were trying to get away from this right to know stuff. 15 easy questions about the sprinkler system. It turns out that the narrative that was being put out by the district about the sprinkler system is inaccurate because I finally got the information by right to know. And actually, I got it real quick. I got within a week. I didn't have to wait two years like with your old solicitor. So the narrative that you guys are spewing was incorrect and inaccurate. Now, all I needed was a couple of questions to be sure that the district understood that and refused to answer my questions. I mean, that's not the way to go. It's not transparency. It's not, you know, trying to help the public understand what's going on here. And then you end up with, you know, the problems you have with right to know. Eight hundred thousand bucks is what we're getting in unanticipated revenue? Well, 750. I rounded up to eight. We could have done a 0% tax increase this year. Without a doubt, not even a question. Eight hundred grand. And, and the thing that's funny about it is you guys are trying to, you're wondering what you're going to do with the money? What do you know what you're going to do with the money? Going to put it in a capital reserve fund? Because you said, Dr. Zerbi, that you can't give it back to the taxpayers, right? Even though you can, Lower Marion did it. Then you said, well, we can't apply it to the, offset the budget because we fall off a cliff. You know, I mean, the problem is you have too much money and you don't know what to do with it. You know, how about we work on this as a goal for next year? Why don't we work on a 0% tax increase? Zero. You already got 800 grand to start it off. And here's what else you do. Call Brian Urshaw, okay? And get his input and then actually bring it to a meeting and discuss it in public. You know, the presentation he gave you guys that nobody discussed? Didn't get discussed at the finance committee? You know, here's a guy, financial background extensive. He comes up with a plan, has it in writing, and you don't even discuss it in finance or here at the, at the board meeting. So now you got an extra 800 grand. Why don't we work on a 0% tax increase next year? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right, seeing none. Any other comments?
I just wanted to really quickly address Mr. Andrews' concern. And Dr. Zerbi, please correct me if I'm wrong. I read, I approved the summer hiring agenda item because this is unusual times. And I believe if we had to wait until August and then someone works for another district and they have to wait to give their notice, we were doing this to hopefully secure as much staff as we can in a timely manner, just like Dr. McGinnis discussed about coaches. Is that, is that correct?
That's accurate.
Thank you for your concern. I just wanted to let you know why.
Thank you for making me a doctor.
All right, because, because teachers can be held by their districts if they don't, if they don't have the approval and then they can't submit their resignation or when they submit their resignation, they can still be held.
That's, that's correct.
So it's a timing, it's a critical timing issue.
And so teachers won't, that want to come to our district from other districts to fill positions, they won't give the resignation until they're hired.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis, and a second. Ms. Reese, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.